Where and when will those clear set of academic expectations be shared with the community? How will we know if and when we've met them? Surveys, once they're done, who receives them? How are they shared and with whom? As a former teacher myself, I remember feeling that surveys were very frequently useless because whatever teachers report is not truly being heard or valued by the administration. I think you proved that when you unanimously adopted the calendar for the coming school year, completely disregarding the overwhelming survey preference of your staff. I was disappointed by that decision because I think it could have been an easy win for teacher morale. Data collection, how and by whom is it compiled and how is it used to further student achievement? What about benchmarks in terms of gain or loss? For example, does the board expect to see, say, a 2% reduction in teacher loss per year for the next five years? Under the recruitment section, the phrase "reflective of our community" is used multiple times. What exactly does that mean and how do we measure it? When it comes to hiring, what is the criteria for deciding if an applicant is actually reflective of our community or not? How do we measure a growth mindset? I know that Dr. Hornick spent some time explaining that phrase at a previous meeting, but it still seems to me like educational jargon that should have an actual measure included in the document. I feel the document overall should focus more on academic rigor and improvement since that is our fundamental purpose as a school system. The strategy of hiring extra reading and math specialists is fabulous. The strategy involved families and social, mental, and emotional health decisions seems completely upside down to me. The wording subordinates the family to the school, choosing to involve them. Families should be the ones making any social, mental, and emotional health decisions in the first place. Quarterly reviews of discipline data is a strategy for safe schools, and the plan discusses this at length and talks about using the VDOE guidance. I suspect that means PBIS and restorative justice type actions that many teachers perceive as a simple slap on the wrist with no real teeth and therefore no real change in behavior. And I think we can do better than that and go beyond VDOE guidance. Things I love in my last 12 seconds, the stakeholder engagement section, improving CTE options, posting K-12 curriculum guides online, could we add posting library catalogs online? One central calendar for the entire division is brilliant and a bunch of other things. Thank you for your time.
The next two speakers are Sarah Jaeger and Ellen Patera.
Good evening. I come to speak as a stakeholder that was also involved in the strategic planning process. I strongly urge the board to approve the draft strategic plan as it has been presented rather than thumb your noses at the countless hours of community service and teamwork put forth in the name of best serving the public education and well-being of our children. I served on the Safe Learning Environment Action Team, and while I don't think the entire process was perfect, it was a valiant attempt to find compromise amongst strong and often opposing viewpoints. I'll admit, I felt slightly disenfranchised when I couldn't attend some of my action team meetings, but I understand it's impossible to perfectly accommodate absolutely everyone's schedules. I wish I could have been more actively involved in writing what would become the draft strategic plan, but understand why that responsibility was largely given to the team leads, who are all paid staff members, educational experts, and already trained in and familiar with the existing school policies and prior strategic plans. Do I believe that there should be more explicit language regarding safety plans and protections for marginalized groups such as minority and LGBTQ children? Absolutely. I'm also a realist who knows that this would never be accepted by vocally partisan and conservative school board candidates and one school board member who also had two of her immediate family members serve in the Strategic Planning Committee and Action Teams, which I felt was personally imbalanced. In regards to the vote on the strategic plan, I want to reference a French proverb, "Don't let perfection be the enemy of good." This strategic plan is intended to be a working document that can be improved as its efficacy is evaluated in real time while in use, as Dr. Hornick has commented on. If the strategic plan is not approved, we open the door to it being torn down even further. Stripped of words such as critical thinking because the fear-mongering Steve Keelers of our community feel critical is too much of a lightning rod word given it's in the acronym CRT. Please do not reject our strategic plan. I say "our" intentionally because it was a fair and balanced community effort in compromise. Stalling on approving the strategic plan is too risky given the rapidly approaching school year. It would leave Orange County public schools completely rudderless and even more vulnerable to partisan attacks on the integrity of public education.
I'll be brief, but I do want to say a few things. One is thank you for involving the community, myself personally, in this whole process. I come to you wearing my mom hat as a mom of a 10th grader and a 7th grader. I really appreciated being part of the process, and I also want to thank you for the actual process. Basically, being part of the strategic team that took these visions at 30,000 viewpoint up above and then being on an action team brought it down to 10,000 feet viewpoint where on both of those teams, as it's already been said, we had to come together and come to consensus to come to... We had lots of people agreeing and disagreeing and talking and listening, and to come together for the sake of our students was just brilliant, and I love that we can have those discussions with each other and feel safe doing that. So, thank you for that. And the challenge I leave you with is now you have this giant group of people who are ready to keep working along with this process, so I ask that you keep asking us to come to these meetings and bring it down to 5,000 feet, 10,000, 5,100 feet, whatever it takes to bring the plan all the way to fruition. So, thank you.
The next two speakers on the strategic plan are Rob Patera and Sandy Harrington.
Yeah, I'll be brief as well, but I just wanted to, again, Dr. Hornick, it was really brilliant, the way that you chose to have the strategic plan come together as a consensus. At first, I thought it was crazy. I'm like, it's never going to happen. This community is so, so divided, and I would get updates from my wife who's on the strategic planning part, and I was just like, oh, gosh, is this going to happen? And then it did, and I know not everyone's happy with the document, but it's a great document. I was able to be part of the action teams, and it was interesting to see so many people from the community. There were teachers, there were administrators, there were parents, there were grandparents, there was somebody who just was a business person in town who just didn't have any stakeholders in it but was part of the community and wanted to be part of the process. So, I've been on strategic planning teams before, and it was nothing like this. It was just a bunch of teachers and administrators sitting in a room for a couple hours, just wordsmithing a few things, done, and then you didn't look at it again until it was time to do a new one. So, the fact that this is a working document, that all the community members were brought in together, and the consensus part of it, I think is great because not everyone's happy. I don't think anyone's completely happy with the document, which means that it's a great document. So, I hope that you all vote yes on the strategic plan because a lot of hard work went into it, and I really think that the process was great.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Hornick, members of the board, community, parents, teachers. I just wanted to say, number one, that I very much appreciated the process. I was impressed with it. I felt, as you've heard from other members tonight, that it was collaborative, it was respectful, and it was inclusive, and it was driven by what's in the best educational and instructional good for our students, and I really felt that that was... It was just clear by the people that were there and the participation and the communication that occurred. As everyone has said, there was a diverse group of people, and a diverse group of ideas of how things could go forward and a good path. Everyone seemed comfortable with sharing their thoughts and listening to the other people's thoughts, and it was good conversation, and I have participated in other strategic planning processes, and I was impressed. I think I was impressed with the overall commitment by so many members of this Orange County Public School community and family. So, I'm very pleased. I wanted to thank you for allowing me to participate in the action group. I was on the safe school environments, and again, just impressed, pleased, and look forward to you passing the plan. It is a living document, so I do hope that we are analyzing it on an annual basis, bringing some information back to our community and our stakeholders, but I think you've done a wonderful job, and I appreciate the opportunity to be involved and the opportunity to support Dr. Hornick in his strategic leadership mission. So, thank you again.
And that's all for the strategic plan.
Okay. Hearing that no one else has signed up for the strategic plan, I will declare that public comment closed, and I will open general public comment. At this time, Mrs. Byram, is anyone signed up for our general public comment?
Yes, we have three people signed up. The first is KJ Potts, Alyssa Waller, and Paul Harris.
Good evening, Dr. Hornick and members of the board. My name is KJ Potts, and my pronouns are they/them. First off, y'all heard my mom, Emily, my mom, earlier say that you should leave the strategic planning committee alone, and that for all of you guys that don't speak into the mic, it makes no sense. Like, it's not like you have to go like this. Just do it like this, and you don't have to go like this. It's really annoying when y'all go, "You guys do that." Like, the mic's not going to give you COVID. You don't have to social distance it from your face. And for all of y'all homophobic people in the audience, neither of them are scary, so speak into the mic. Thank you, and that's all.
Good evening, everyone. I was praying for an easy go of things once the strategic plan was presented to our nonpartisan school board. The team that was chosen had a variety of people from OC from different professions, racist, sexist, et cetera. I still remember leaving the first meeting feeling encouraged and enthusiastic about the possibility of diversity being embraced and celebrated, not to mention our main focus, bettering Orange County public schools for our students. We all had different past experiences, ideas, beliefs, codes of ethics, levels of emotional intelligence, political beliefs, and so on. However, when discussions began, questions asked, and critical conversations with respect and removing certain things, I realized we might not all believe how to get it done, but there was one common ground 100%, what needed to be done and why we were there. I was disappointed I missed Dr. Hornick's presentation of the plan to the board, but even more disappointed to see so much commentary, especially from those who were in on the process, now flip a script because they have an audience that supports the idea certain words can't be used. But while we met, those same people supported what was said, especially by definition. Words carry power, the power we give them. Red flag words, phrases such as diversity, equity, equal inclusion, critical thinking, social emotional learning, SEL, and so forth, have the ability to create argumentative responses. But divergence, assortment, melody, range, honesty, impartiality, square deal, justice, fair-mindedness, commiserate, balance, coordinate, identic, proportionate, and analytical, particular, discerning, brainstorming, reasoning, deliberating, self-control, interpersonal skills do not spark the same reaction. However, those are synonyms for the red flag words, but they haven't been overly used in political settings. See where I'm going with this? And power we give to words, just some food for thought. Just keep it in mind the next time you hear what's deemed a red flag word. Possibly consider the actual definition, and you might find yourself not so bothered. We are long overdue for community charrettes to happen, to have open, honest, civil discussions to educate one another on our differences and our concerns, to better understand one another and become more unified regardless of labels. James, Chapter 2, 8 through 9, "You do well when you complete the royal rule of scripture. Love others as you love yourself, but if you play up to those so-called important people, you go against the rule and you will be convicted by it." Acts 10 and 34 through 35, Peter explains his good news, "God's own truth, and nothing could be plainer. God plays no favoritism. It makes no difference who you are or where you are from. If you want God, the door's open." I hope you all have a good evening, good people.
I guess I should practice speaking into the mic well. I want to thank Dr. Hornick and the board for allowing me to speak here. I'm basically just going to speak about the need for a community coordinator, volunteer coordinator for our community. I also was on the committee, and I've had a lot of experience in community relations, being a volunteer for a number of years. I worked for the school system, and then I retired and have been a substitute teacher for a number of years. I think I've retired again this year, but that's not the point. I just feel that it's very... I just feel that it's very, there's a significant need for a, at least one person to be a designated community volunteer coordinator. Whether that person may be part of the school board staff, or whether that person is appointed or is a volunteer, and to the, and is under the direction of the school board, one central person helping to coordinate the schools that are already using volunteers, reaching out to the community, reaching out to businesses, to nonprofit organizations, anyone that wants to participate, reaching out to the students. Many teachers, and we have many programs where our high school students especially are encouraged to volunteer. In this day and time, communication is so important. In this day and time, being able to get along with each, each other is very important. And I think that if we start from the top and have a designated community volunteer coordinator, I think that'll be a step in the right direction. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Bowden, is anyone else signed up?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Hearing that no one else has signed up, I would declare public comment closed, and we will continue with the meeting. Dr. Hornick, I will turn it over to you.
All right, thank you very much. At this time, we will head to reports and recommendations, so I'd like to invite Dr. Wolfrey and Honnicker, as well as Ms. Ailer, to come forward. And this evening, they will present to you, as we do annually, information about federal grants, titles one, two, three, and four.
Good evening. Tonight, we would like to discuss over some of the process that's used for applying for the federal grant applications each year, starting with the timeline. Each year in July, we request the school board to approve our ability to apply for these funds, and then we submit that plan to VDOE for approval. During the months of August, during the month of August, we make revisions to the plan based on feedback from the Virginia Department of Ed, and we also wait to see what our actual allocations will be. That usually happens in late August or early September. And then we revise the plan for the actual amount. And then throughout the life of the grant, we request reimbursements for the approved expenditures through the Virginia Department of Ed's Omega Program. When we're writing these grants, we utilize a lot of different things that we have to take into consideration. One is professional development. We have to train our staff to meet the needs of all students, all, at all different ability levels. We have to train our specialists to be able to provide interventions to students. We request teacher input for instructional materials or training that might be needed. We look at our academic data to make those decisions on how we're going to use the grant to, to its fullest. We get, each year, we do a needs assessment. We receive input from our principals and schools through that needs assessment, and also through parent advisory committees, and all of that goes together when we are developing those plans. So now we'll look at each of the specific plans and what we're asking for your approval to be able to apply.
We're gonna provide a brief overview of each of the grant applications, title one, two, three, and four. These will include a projected amount. As Dr. Honnicker said, the amount will change throughout the course of the year, or potentially could change, and then how those funds will be utilized to serve our students. So the first grant that we'll talk about is Title I, and Title I is used to support our schools with high percentages of students who are from low-income homes. Currently, we have four schools that are designated, Title I, Gordon Barber, Orange Elementary, Lightfoot, and Unionville Elementary Schools. Funding from Title I is used to provide salaries and benefits for reading specialists, not all of them, some of them are locally funded, but some of those positions in each of those four schools, as well as supplemental instructional materials, and funding also for events to engage families and help support learning at home. Dr. Honnicker's gonna come back and talk a little bit about Title II and Title III.
The estimated allocation for Title II is listed here. The purpose of that grant is to support academic programs through professional development of teachers and principals, and also to provide us with conferences and trainings for those people as well, not just trainings within, but bringing people in and sending people to conferences to help increase their effectiveness. We also utilize this, in some cases, to help, to help provide the support for teachers when they are applying for their license as well. That can be used here, as well as new teacher development when they're hired. And the next one is Title III, and Title III is one, is our smallest grant. It is what we get from the Virginia Department of Ed for, well, actually, it's a federal grant, for our ELL students, and it supports our programs that we use to go above and beyond what we offer all students in our division. For example, we use some of these funds to help fund an ELL tutor to help those students with acquiring the English language, and we also have activities for parents, as well as providing some materials and supplies. It is our smallest grant of the three. Sometimes we get more for immigrant youth, but that's on a year-to-year basis, and we did not get any last year for that.
And the last grant is Title IV. It's approximately $53,000 each year, and these funds support access and opportunities for a well-rounded education for all students, to support school conditions for student learning, in order to create a healthy and safe school environment, and support access to personalized learning experiences that are supported by technology and professional development for the effective use of that technology. These funds will be used to support part of the STEM curriculum, professional development for the STEM curriculum, a student support coach, and funding for outpatient counseling, counseling services for families who are unable to afford the co-pay. There is an application, and that's open to any family in the school division. Those are the, the title grants. Does anyone have any questions?
So this is a action item tonight. So is there anything you'd like to add to that?
No, ma'am.
Okay. And are there any questions? No, I don't have any questions. Okay. Then if there are no questions, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the submission of the federal grant applications.
Okay. Can I have a second?
A second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, madam. Chair members of the board, and I know Ms. Ailer will stay here for our next item, letter B. And we are really happy to be able to bring this document forward for your review and information this evening. As we, over the last year, as I've moved through my transition, and through the strategic planning process as well, one, a key theme that we heard is the importance of student behavior on the bus, in school. It's important for many reasons. We don't want classroom disruptions. That takes away from the limited instructional time that we have already to get through the large number of standards that we have to get through, as well as competencies. It truly is a culture and climate killer. It makes it, it makes everybody's job, from teacher to principal, to bus driver, to everybody in between, more difficult. And it has become very clear to me that the, the folks in this community want to have a document and some parameters established, and so we came up with the idea of actually taking information out of the parent handbook. So these themes and parameters were, they existed. This just makes it much clearer. So this document that you have before you is designed to be some enhanced language to our community, to establish expectations, to work in concert with them, to recognize and highlight specifically the responsibilities that we hold ourselves accountable to, what building administrators' jobs are, what our teachers' jobs are, what we're hoping to get as far as from our parents and guardians in the way of support. It also establishes ranges of consequence based on, that are, that are age-appropriate and developmental appropriate, based on, you will see some, that there are higher levels of consequence naturally in a secondary setting for certain activities than in an elementary setting. From this document, our principals will be able to much better establish and use language when they're sharing with parents. I've already heard from a number of our principals that they appreciate this enhanced language and the clarity with which it's presented. They will be able to use that to work with their teachers to build their in-house behavior management plans, working within parameters and guidance, certainly from the VDOE, but ones that we also know that are important. It establishes and maintains the communication with our law enforcement, and shows some of the different areas that we will have a mandatory report. And it's, thankfully, as we get more sheriffs, deputies, and SROs in our building, that, those lines of communication to ensure that that support and, and dialogue is flowing both ways will be significantly enhanced. And so I also believe that this document is very much in line with the information and the thoughts of the strategic planning team, both the 30-member strategic plan group, as well as the Safe and Secure and Supportive Schools team. And so again, we are very much happy to bring this forward. Susan was a primary author, Ms. Ailer was a primary author in this, but it's certainly been a collaborative effort, and she is here to answer any questions you may have this evening. Again, this is to bring forward to the community and to the board, to get an idea of where we, to get an idea of what we are thinking as far as code of conduct and, and student behavior, and what our expectations are. And again, myself and Susan are both here to answer any questions you might have at this point. We know it's a lengthy document, but it does include a lot of really important information, and we will seek your approval later this month, so that hopefully this is ready to go for the school year, where this document will be sent out. We like to do it in, in an electronic format, hopefully utilizing Power Score, our Power School application, so that it also can be acknowledged by our, by parents and guardians, as well as our students, so they're very clear with what we are expecting as far as behavior when they return to school on August 9th. So we see this as that, that first step to rebuilding, a, a next step in rebuilding trust with the community, and really a first step in making sure what we expect is very, very clear to our students in particular.
The only clarification I would like to give is that this doesn't replace the student-parent handbook that goes out every year. It takes a piece out of that handbook and makes it more of a student-parent notification. So there are other things that we're required to notify parents and have them sign off on. So that document will actually just be smaller and more condensed for those notifications. This takes the student code of conduct out of there, and really elaborates on, one, I think it was important to include board policy. This is what our school board policy says, and making sure that that's accessible, as well as, here's what we have to report to the Virginia Department of Education, so that everyone is fully aware of the parameters that were given, and codes in, from the Code of Virginia, there's hyperlinks in here as well that take certain pieces of it straight to the Code of Virginia, to help explain why we have to do some things the way that we do. So happy to answer any questions.
On page four, the fourth paragraph down. It states, "Parents of students who are absent must provide a valid note stating the reason for absence upon returning to school, or at least within five days of the first day absent." If they're absent for six days, would that not put them out of compliance with the code of conduct?
As long as they provide a note when they come, the student comes back, but the, in between, there's also a lot of phone calls that happen between the school and the family to, you know, we've noticed, you know, Suzie's been absent for two days, how can we help? Is, is there any assistance that we can offer? So that there's already some communication going back and forth between the school and family to know why someone's not there. Or families, if they had a trip or something that they were going on, they have typically let us know in advance.
Would it be more concise, or, I guess, better worded to state, upon returning to school within three days of return, or something like that? So that way, it doesn't automatically, because you could argue...
Right.
...that child's out of compliance.
I'm, we're, I'm happy to, to make that change, and it would need to come back as far as a policy revision for the board, and absolutely, we'd be happy to make that change if that was the, the consensus and wish of the board. I'd be happy to, absolutely.
I think we can make note of that, since we have two board members absent. Susan?
Mm-hmm.
And, and just put it, you know, make a notation that Ms. Quinterna had had to ask to add this.
Absolutely.
And they review it, and, uh...
Mm-hmm.
I do think this is an opportune time. I think that's a great, great question and comment brought forward, Ms. Quinterna. Just, just a reminder to everybody in attendance that are, that when we talk about chronic absenteeism, the, the Department of Education does not distinguish between any of the reasons why a student was out. And so for the purposes of judging a school utilizing chronic absenteeism, if you were out five days with the flu, with an excuse note, and you were out five days because you skipped school, it's unexcused, schools are held equally responsible for both of those. And so ultimately, the, the point that we try to get to with our policy is, one of the most difficult things we're trying to do is establish and, and direct our resources to the places that really need the resources to be expended. And so if we're gonna have, for instance, a social worker begin to engage with the family of a student, and you, and you have two families and each have a student that have 15 days absent, we're trying to determine which one is a true chronic absenteeism insofar as the parents didn't know about it, or perhaps they support it and don't make the student go to school, versus the kid that was on a 15-day trip, family vacation slash educational trip to Italy. And so that's where a lot of this language comes in. It's really to, to try to get folks to understand, we are, we are trying to figure out, in the realm of all the students we have and the days missed, where the true chronic absenteeism lies, so that we direct our resources, particularly for those students, as opposed to ones that are more in the excused realm. But again, we're held accountable either way. And so the state of Virginia says, in order to be a level one on your accreditation report, that 15% or less of the students in a particular school have to miss 10% or less of the school days. Okay? So meaning in 180-day school year, 15% of your students need to miss 18 or less school days. And so that's where, and when we're talking about five days of being absent, you know, that notification within three, that could certainly help clarify and get the information to us a little bit earlier.
Correct.
And again, so this is currently how policy JED is written, and so we, we could certainly look at and bring forward a recommendation that would change that policy to get the notification quicker, which then we could, you know, supplementally change here in, in our draft to you. So I think that's an appropriate look. But I just, as a reminder, that's, that's really the challenge with absenteeism is, you know, extended medical, hospital visits are viewed much the same way that a student's skipping school. And so it's, it's important for us to be able to differentiate between...
Thank you. All right. I really don't have any questions as of yet.
Okay.
And I have not been able to completely read through it all, but definitely what I've read through so far seems like a great start, for sure.
Well, thank you. It is a long document, 39 pages. I will, I will say, in looking at, you know, different samples and things that are out there, there are some that are 80 and 90 pages, so we wanted to make it very readable for our parents and our community, and so that it wasn't so much information you stop reading, but enough information for understanding.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. And we will now move through to our next port of... Thank you all very much. And we will now move through to our next port of call, letter C, presentation of proposed policy revisions. And so at the last full meeting we had in June, we were discussing proposed changes to GBA and IIIBEA. So I'd like to start first with a piece of advice, a recommendation from the VSBA. So if you could scroll down, they came out recommending the school divisions include this part here at the bottom, where it starts with no employee or agent of the school board or person or entity contracted with the school board. And it talks a lot about, and this is based on recent legislation with respect to WeChat, TikTok, or any other website developed by ByteDance Limited or Tencent Holdings. And so when we were speaking originally about Ms. Quinter's recommendation to have the established provisions, which we have up here currently as number nine, I mentioned at the time that we knew there was going to be additional language that was going to be placed in these two policies so that we make sure that we're in compliance with recent legislation and information that came out from the General Assembly as well as from the governor. So I wanted to draw the board's attention to that language because that is, that is new from the last time you would have seen this in June. And then I did take the recommend, the proposed wording slash the idea behind the wording of having students, parents, and guardians be informed of about electronic communication that isn't related school activity to our division council. And he provided the language, and I think we might have some additional discussion on that, but happy to do that here. But that is, those are the two. I, I wanted to make sure we drew the attention to number nine as well as to this new paragraph that was added, which you would not have seen in June.
Okay, thank you. Moving on. Okay, I did want to discuss point number nine, if that's okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Sure. It's in both, actually. It's in GAB and IIIBEA. As far as the provisions, I did see that there was a clear loophole that would allow for blanket notifications at the beginning of the year, which my intent would be that parents know of the content of the discussions, not just that they may happen. So to further clarify point number nine, I would prefer to amend it to provisions establishing that staff must include slash copy a student's parent slash guardian on all electronic communication with the student on topics unrelated to school activities, except for when the parent slash guardian opt out.
We can add that on there so that when the other board members will, yeah, it'll be there.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Yep, that's no problem, Ms. Byram. We'll make that change, and that language will be, that wordsmithing will be in number nine to enhance that language when we bring it back to you in the 24th. No problem.
I just have one, it's kind of more of a generic question, and I've noticed on the last couple ones that we have done, where we talk about the school business, we've changed that to district. Was there something that occurred, why we were doing that, or what was the reasoning in changing school to division?
It's in the second paragraph of that IIIBEA, and also in the second paragraph of the GAB.
Okay, so the, these were out of the, the policy drop that came from the VSBA, and I'm, I'm going to work under the assumption that it is to show a wider scope as far as school businesses as one individual school versus the fact that the division covers all of, all of the sites within, that there isn't an exception for any particular site, that all, all of the schools are encompassed under the, under the division umbrella to try to make it clear that all sites are being held to this standard, including, including central office and folks that are not based in school. So that might be clarifying language to show that it, that it's meant to cover all, all employees regardless of the site in which they work. Could be maintenance, it could be bus drivers, et cetera. It's, we should, we should be handling things that are tied to, you know, the, the actual business of, you could argue, school division as well. But that, I'm gonna, I'm thinking that is the intent, to try to make it more comprehensive that all employees are held to that standard. Would you agree, Ms. Byram?
I was just curious, because like I said, I've noticed the last couple ones, and I didn't know if there was a reason specifically why we were doing it, or it was coming from somewhere else.
Got it. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we will go to letter D. And I know there's been information that has been brought forward and recent news reports, et cetera, about the K-12 learning grants. But we, I originally spoke with the board about this.
Is that in June, May?
I think it might have been May. Okay, let's say May, that sounds better. About the K-12 learning acceleration grants program and some potential, some potential consternation with existing board policy and whether or not we should amend board policy, which currently states that teachers should not be essentially working for and tutoring students who are currently enrolled in that particular subject or class, being paid by an outside provider. And so I was just coming back to you, and I'm not sure, because this really, this initiative doesn't necessarily come through school divisions. It is publicized, and parents, guardians, students, and teachers can sign up to participate. But ultimately, our recommendation, as well as working with the division council, is to maintain our policy. It doesn't leave any teacher out slash employee out from wanting to engage and be a tutor within class wallet and within the learning acceleration program. So it's just circling back to the board to follow up that it's ultimately our recommendation and my recommendation, we just leave our current policies in place. It doesn't, it doesn't hinder anybody's ability to participate in this program. So that was more of just information. And at this point, we'll move to letter E, and Mr. Arnold will come forward, and he will be here for letters E and F, I guess, correct, Doug, to provide a status on the performance contract. And I know Frank from ABM is here. Good to see you, Frank. Thank you for being here. And then he will stay up to, to give a, a pretty robust overview of some of the summer work that we have been engaging in over the past few months. Mr. Arnold?
Yes, indeed. Thank you, Dr. Horneck, and Chair Members of the Board. First item, as Dr. Horneck mentioned, is that we have now gotten traction with our performance contract. The initial proposal was presented back in December and was approved by this board on January the 2nd at their regular meeting. Since then, we have worked with ABM, and Dr. Horneck, Gary, and all have worked with the county. And the county has approved the funding for the extra portion of that, which enables us to overhaul the HVAC at Gordon Barber. And that was about a $1.25 million add, creating a total contract at that time, I think it was about $5.65 million. Since then, we've had some more negotiations with ABM and with Bank of America. And the two things that have changed is that the cost of the project has gone down slightly due to the fortunate aspect that we, when we build the roof at Gordon Barber, we'd be able to run the refrigerant lines to the individual units between the old roof and the new roof and not have to go through the ceiling, meaning it's going to make it easier for the contractor to do the work and therefore cheaper. That's offset by the interest rates being higher. So our net cost is about what it was then. And the other condition of the county approval was it to be funded in the current fiscal year rather than in 2023. So that's why we had to do that now. But we're ready to go. Gary and I have a conference call with the bank folks and our attorney on Thursday, I think, Gary? Wednesday of this week. So that will be one of the final steps to get this thing going. And we're pretty excited to be able to get to that stage. Any questions or comments from the board regarding performance contract?
And this will be a project for next summer.
The Gordon Barber portion. The lighting can be done after hours throughout the year, just like we did in phases one and two. Gordon Barber will be done in the summer, along with the roof. Okay. All right. Moving on to all of the various projects that are ongoing or completed or about to begin, starting with, of course, Gordon Barber. There's been a lot of trades that have finished out. Roof is on, looks good. If anybody hasn't been by there yet, I would strongly encourage you to do so. The brick is on, the windows are in, and it looks like a, a fine building and a true addition to the school. The roof will also maybe to visualize what the existing building will look like when that, that roof is done. The drywall, roofing, sidewalks, ductwork, windows, doors, plumbing, and electrical are substantially complete. They're working on painting, ceiling grid, casework, plumbing and electrical trim outs. They have also installed a temporary HVAC unit to get the building cool and enable the finishing trades such as painting and VCT flooring to proceed and not have to wait for the permanent unit, which should arrive later this month. Moving on to Hornet Sports Center. We have repaved the driveway and parking lot next to the building and removed the, the very abrupt speed bumps that were there. There were three of those. We have replaced them with two-speed humps, one at each end, and those enable the car to kind of float over it if they're going the right speed. They'll still disrupt your flow if you're going too fast. Along with that, we repaved the entire parking lot and restriped it. Also at Orange County High School, we have renovated the nursing lab, counseling center, main office conference room, and storage area, and several offices and classrooms. We're also doing some renovations in the old gym. And that work is substantially complete, but we're putting some finishing touches on the counseling center, and we're also going to be painting the upper part of the hallways. And then on the, I put this politely, the buildings that have outlived their intended usage, which would be the Five Learning cottages, the JROTC building, and also the BOAG building. We have done the work that we need to do to keep using those buildings. New flooring in the, the Learning cottages and in the JROTC building. And in the BOAG building, we have one room that we have essentially gutted and removed the old wood blocking and made it both meet code and be an attractive place to do your work. Also at the high school, we're doing some exterior renovations to improve curb appeal, such as landscaping. We've taken down a lot of trees. We've left the remaining trees behind the school so they have room to grow and still provide shade while not being all crowded together. We're also going to paint the exterior of the Learning cottages to resemble the, the same blue and upper orange color scheme that we have at the restroom facilities at Porterfield Park. So that'll kind of make that more consistent with the rest of the school, and painting the ceiling of the front entrance. Onto Prospect Heights Middle School. We have replaced the walk-in freezer and refrigerator, which were original to the school, and the freezer unit actually had started to settle. It didn't have the proper pad underneath. And so that, those are done. We also have painted the kitchen and installed some corner and wall protection because those sheet rock walls in a kitchen get pretty beat up, as you know, the newer schools versus the older schools that are cinder block and they take a lot of abuse and just keep on going. But we have compensated for that by putting in corner guards and vinyl wall protection on the lower parts of the, those walls. We are also replacing the obsolete fire alarm panel, which strangely, the two schools built at the same time had two different brands of fire alarm panel. And the one at Locust Grove Elementary is the same manufacturer as all the others in the entire division, but this one was a different manufacturer and has become obsolete. You know, we can't repair it. So we're biting the bullet this year and replacing the whole thing and replacing all the devices in the rooms and so forth. Also at Prospect Heights, the chillers have come in, and they will be replaced starting next week. And that's a grant-funded project from one of the ESAR grants. And we will be doing the same thing at Locust Grove Elementary School, but we don't have those yet. Those will be delivered in probably September and installed after cooling season ends, rather than shutting down the school during, during class. Unionville and Lightfoot walkway connectors are proceeding. Both have the demolition work done, the canopy's removed, underground plumbing work done, footers, concrete slab, and the block walls are up. They've installed the bearing plates for the bar joists. Bar joists have not arrived yet, so that will drive the schedule on the interiors. But they'll be able to go ahead and finish out the exteriors regardless of that. Also at Unionville and Lightfoot, if you go by there, you'll see new lettering on both schools. We put new lettering on the front wall of the cafeteria and then smaller letters right on the front entrance where you can see coming in, similar to what we did at Locust Grove Middle School back in the spring. Porterfield Park, we have removed all of the block structures under the bleachers. The substandard bathroom facilities and all the former concession stand storage areas, we brought a, we reduced the number of sheds here for head start, asked them to consolidate into one shed, and we moved the other shed to Porterfield Park. And that was able to store what remaining materials we had, such as mowers and fertilizers that were stored under the bleachers. They're now in that shed. And the, the cinder block structure is gone. And we also removed the small ticket booth there where you come in. The, fortunately, the steel structure for the bleachers was built before the cinder block walls, and so that's still standing and wasn't affected by the demo. We also took out the large scoreboard that was damaged by the tree back in, when was that, last January, I think? Anyway, so that scoreboard is gone, and the new scoreboard will be installed prior to football season. And the temporary, the smaller pink scoreboard that was there that we used after the big one was damaged, that is now over at Prospect Heights next door. And that will be renovated and installed there. Last but not least, Unionville kindergarten annex is getting all new flooring. The remaining asbestos in that building has been removed, and the floor tile has been installed on half the building, finishing last week. And so they'll wax that this week, and then the contractor will come back and do the other half before school starts. I think that's all I've got for now. There are more, but we tried to hit the highlights. Any questions or comments from the board?
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. And at this time, this is our addition, letter G. Mr. Sarver forward, to give an update on transportation. And again, this is referencing our recent acquisition of a security vehicle for our high school security officers.
So during the latter part of the school year, there were several conversations about what we could do to help augment our school safety. Primarily, I don't know, if you've been on campus, you've probably seen the orange golf cart. And it's effective. We're getting around the, the core campus, but it's not effective in inclement weather. And there's limitations to what you can do with a golf cart, truthfully. We started talking about the feasibility of potentially taking an existing division vehicle and converting it into a campus security vehicle. At this time, we just don't have the extra vehicle. I was afraid to decommission, you know, a car that we may need to use to move this, do- a car that we may need to use to move us through special needs. Um, and really the funding wasn't there to replace an existing vehicle to rotate an older vehicle into that purpose. So I reached out to Captain Smith, just to see if by chance I may have caught the timing right to find a decommissioned, uh, sheriff's cruiser. And he got back with me and found an acceptable vehicle. It's a, um, twenty sixteen Ford, um, Interceptor. It's a police version of a Ford Explorer. And it's in a condition that will give us many years of service. We'll outfit it with amber lighting, um, school security graphics, and we'll be able to use it for events. We'll be able to use it for daily activities. If he needs to take, if our school staff needs to take somebody home, various uses. Uh, so we're very appreciative to Captain Smith and the Sheriff's Department and as well as the board supervisors and all others involved in making this free transfer, a free asset transfer instead of having to purchase it. So we're very appreciative. And I'll keep you posted on the progress as we outfit it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, members of the board, that is all this evening for reports and recommendations. Thank you for your time.
Ken, I just want to say thank you to Captain Smith and the Sheriff's Office to make, for making that happen. That just goes to show you good working relationships. So, um, at this time, can we have closed session certification, please?
Pursuant to two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A of the Code of Virginia, the Orange County School Board will convene a closed meeting for the following: Discussion of Personnel or the Performance of a Division Employee as Authorized by Section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A one of the Code of Virginia for Resignation, Termination, Transfer, Employment, Salary Adjustment and Retirement of Employees; and Discussion of Pupil Personnel as Authorized by Section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A two for Early Admission, Waiver of, Waiver of Compulsory Attendance Out of County, Out of District Requests and Student Discipline.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
A second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Close.
Second.